We'll call the meeting to order again and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. We will start school committee member introductions with Councilor Harriman.
Scott Harriman, City Council Representative to the School Committee.
Donna Glant, Ward Seven.
Megan Heard, Ward Six.
Iman Osman, Ward Five.
Craig Shopman, here, Ward Four.
Elizabeth Eames, Ward Three.
Janet Bowden, Ward Two.
Phoenix Swilflin, Ward One.
Megan Parks, at large.
Jake Langley, Superintendent.
Karen Paket, Assistant Superintendent.
Agenda item number five is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that members would like set aside? Seeing none, the consent agenda is adopted. Agenda item number six is public input. Members of the public may address the school committee for up to three minutes on non-agenda items now and on agenda items later. Comments that pertain to staff, personnel matters, or a student issue should be directed to the superintendent or the appropriate staff member of Lewiston Public Schools. Public comments shall be directed to the school committee and be brief, not repetitive, and related to the matter at hand. Before starting, please state your name, address, and affiliation to Lewiston Public Schools. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak?
Matthew Egerton, Ward Four. First, I ask if you guys would please turn your mics up because we can barely hear you in the back of the room. I then come before this committee to ask something of you that I've been hearing and asked before. Please publish all your operating rules on this school committee's website where they're easy to find by anyone interested in them. I would suggest in your quick link section, along with your schedule, YouTube meeting link, budget link, and school policy manual, because they're important to all of us. I not only looked myself, but I asked a number of people here in Lewiston who commonly know where things are located. None of them could provide me where it's publicly available, including many former members of this said committee. Now, I did get a copy of your current operational rules from Jake after asking, but they should be like our city council meeting rules. They're right on the website where anyone can find them. Council Harriman will agree that's where they are because I've used them before with them. All we ask from you people is full transparency where your rules are. And how you conduct yourself before us. Thank you.
Thank you. Austin, is there a way to turn the volume up because we don't have volume controls?
Mics closer to you and speak louder.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Jay Rich, and I'm going to read on behalf of a teacher that was not able to be here tonight. Dear School Committee Members, I hope this message finds you well. I want to express my gratitude for your continued support of our school and district. I'm writing to emphasize the crucial need to maintain our current budget as further cuts would be detrimental to our school and our community. Our instructional coaches, coaching staff, excuse me, play a vital role in ensuring that our students receive quality education. With the upcoming changes in federal leadership, the stability of Title I funding is uncertain, which could jeopardize our interventionist staff. Losing these essential positions would likely lead to increased special education numbers, which we all recognize is not a positive outcome for our district. Moreover, any additional staffing cuts will inevitably result in lower test scores undermining the progress we have made. We must continue to provide quality interventions to keep our students safe on track for graduation. Investing in their education is not just a local priority, it's an investment in the future of our country. Our future nurses, doctors, police officers, teachers, and community workers rely on us to ensure that they are literate and capable of caring for society. As both a Lewiston teacher and a mother of a future Blue Devil, I sincerely urge you to support a budget that prioritizes quality education. Our children deserve nothing less. Thank you for your attention in this important matter, and this was written by Renee Burand. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak?
How's that? David Rackmills, I think I've spoken here once before. I'm a resident of Ward One here in Lewiston, citizen. Not a parent, just concerned about our youth and the community in general. And I just wanted to express thanks and appreciation to all of the school committee members for doing what you're doing. It's a very difficult job that you have, but it's a very important job. It's vitally important. It's about the youth in our community. And just stay focused on that and that you'll only be able to be effective as a team if you guys can figure out a way to work together to move that agenda forward. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak?
Andrew Jones, Ward Two. I'm speaking tonight to voice my displeasure regarding the actions of this body as a whole during the committee meeting on the evening of January the sixth. For the public's benefit, I will recap. There is a disagreement regarding how nominations for the Chair of the Committee would be handled, with the current Chair deciding that one nomination would be heard and voted on before any other nominations could be brought forward. This immediately hamstrings competing nominations by adding an additional motion required for them to be heard and creating an uneven playing field. Member Bowden had made a comment that night that the Chair chose to recognize Member Eames first when agenda number seven was opened. Whether or not that was self-serving on the part of the Chair is up for debate. However, I do not feel this is fair criticism of the Chair because I re-watched the video and Member Eames did have her hand up first. I do, however, disagree with how the agenda item was handled because of the inherent advantage that the first nomination has over all others. Last week, I emailed this body a link to the City Council's meeting where they elected the City Council President as an example of a fair process. And on a side note, I'd like to applaud Councilor Harriman for taking the results with a degree of grace, at least from the perspective of this member of the public. The phrase "it's not me, it's our procedural rules," or some variation thereof, was said multiple times in an attempt to defend against concerns raised by multiple members of this committee. I'd like to remind the Chair that orders are orders, otherwise known as the Nuremberg Defense, was not valid in 1945, and it isn't valid now either. Even our armed forces of today have a legal obligation to disobey orders that are manifestly unlawful or immoral. I realize that it's hyperbolic to compare World War II military tribunals to the election of a school committee chair. However, the underlying issue of fairness is the point I am trying to make. The rules that the Chair was attempting to enforce, whether it was appropriate to use them at the time or not, are inherently unfair and should be dispensed in favor of a process that affords all members the ability to nominate a candidate of their choosing. Thank you very much for your time.
Are there any? Right now is for non-agenda. Right now is for non-agenda items.
Okay, for non, okay.
Walk the line.
Hi, my name is Kate. I'm from Ward Seven. I just came to speak and just kind of shed a little positivity onto the Lewiston school system and my experience with my two children. So I've been a Lewiston resident about sixteen years now and have worked here for twenty. I'm a stylist. I've been behind the chair, listening to everyone's experiences going through Lewiston Public School System, unfortunately mostly negative. When I did have children, I decided once public school was an option, they had opened a charter school in the area that I actually decided to go to just off of negativity towards the Lewiston school system. My children, sorry, did spend about six years in the charter school until I felt like this school wasn't giving them what they needed to succeed. I decided in January twenty-two to move my children to the Lewiston Public School System. My son currently had been placed for an IEP for reading, writing, and speech and wasn't getting the support he needed at his prior school. When we switched over to McMahon, my son's attitude had changed about school. He had support in his everyday classrooms along with students. He worked hard and became part of the Student Council. In the two years of being McMahon, my son has tested out of any needs for IEP, and that was due to his hard work and the support he had at McMahon. It was very last year we were here, about a year ago, for Student Council with Lewiston at McMahon to talk about the school budget. And it was amazing to see these sixth, fifth, and sixth graders stand up here and be able to speak about how the school cut and the budgets are negatively going to affect them. I think we do need to hear more about how our children are in school because I know it's not all negative. I also have a daughter who just started middle school, and again, I've heard nothing but negative things about middle school, and we are in January, and my daughter's thriving. Her teachers communicate well with me, and she's had a positive experience as well. So I just was here to share that there are some great students and great staff at Lewiston, and I hope that we can focus a lot more on that as we move forward. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much for sharing that. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak?
I'm not sure which ward I belong to, but my name's Hillary Foster. My son goes to Connors Elementary. I'll just give you a quick little backstory. Anyways, my mom was a public education teacher in Lewiston for almost twenty years. But again, just as long as Kate had said, Lewiston gets a pretty bad rap. But I'll give you some positive things, especially about Connors. We're kind of like the first little school, I think, in Maine. We're huge population. We have almost eight hundred kids. And you push those kids together, we're gonna get a lot of negative, but hopefully some good. The same thing. I just want to shed some positive light on my child's education there. We had the liaison countless days giving the kids high fives on the way in. My child also, you know, he's a COVID kid, so he started in kindergarten at Lewiston Public Schools. So those kids are a little bit behind the gamut, you know, but they definitely stepped up and helped my child with any of his, you know, learning lessons or his reading, whatever, whatever, you know, whichever way we want to go with that. But I feel like Connors especially gets stomped on pretty heavily for some pretty sad reasons. But as far as somebody who's been in the Lewiston for thirty-eight years I've lived here, but also, you know, having a mom that was a teacher and my child, I definitely appreciate the Lewiston public education, and any unnecessary cuts would definitely be detrimental to our children. So appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Sorry for the beeping. Are there any other members of the public?
Ron Potvin, Ward Six, two ninety-one, Bond Road. Want to come here tonight to express my deep, deep displeasure about the activities of last week's meeting. Having served both cities and multiple committees, I've seen this argument over and over and over again. How do we elect our leadership? There's a time and there's a place to take up procedures. There's a time and a place for debate. At no time is there a time to neglect the duties given to you by the voters to do the job. And the neglect of four of you to stand up and leave this meeting and not do the job of the public when we have the kids to educate the concerns that are out there. How much have we talked about homelessness, ELL, special ed? I know, having served for the two years I did here, the fifty-some-odd meetings, how precious every moment, how much the time we had to get all this accomplished. Third-largest municipal entity, hundred-and-ten-million-dollar budget. There is no time to get up and play these political games and make statements. There's times to debate, and you have that time to debate. Do the job that the public wants you to do. I'm not particularly pleased with my own ward member in six. All right? What have I heard on the optic this year, this week? Not about the Chair's vote, not about what you were voting on. Can you imagine? Four elected officials just got up and walked out of a meeting and didn't do the job. That was the discussion at Cumberland Farms. So just want to pass that along, please. I know of anybody, you're gonna have your disagreements. Do the job. Do the debate when the time is appropriate, and stay here and do the job. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak?
This one is me this time. Is that okay? Okay, thank you. Jay Rich, I'm a multilingual teacher at McMahon. In light of recent occurrences, I'd like to read the following school committee policies. School Committee Policy BCA, School Committee Member Code of Ethics, which states, "I will make no disparaging remarks in or out of the school committee meetings about other members of the school committee. I will support a decision made by the majority of the school committee graciously." Additionally, Policy BEB, School Committee Members' Use of Social Media, which states, "Members should conduct themselves on social media in a manner that reflects well on the committee and on the school unit, and with decorum expected of an elected official. Avoid posting in anger even when revoked, and refrain from harassing, defaming, and disparaging fellow committee members or others based on racial, religious, or other personal characteristics. Together, let's strive to embody the values we wish to instill in our students, and please rest assured, I will continue to stay in my lane, working diligently for the benefit of schools and the community." Thank you.
Lisa Jones, Ward Two. I didn't intend to speak tonight, but I feel the need to get up and thank the four of you who got up and walked out of the, I don't know what to call what went on last week. It certainly wasn't a meeting. There are rules in place. They weren't being followed, and there was absolutely no reason for you to go along with what was going on. Thank you for standing by your principles and walking out.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item number seven. To review and potentially vote on the second read of the following policy, BBAB.
So this is the policy that we did the first read of last week, and just bringing it back for the second read so that we can get it into the policy manual if you so choose.
Is there a motion, Member Heard?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the second read of the following policy, BBAB.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Agenda item number eight, a workshop to review procedures for nominating and electing Chair, Vice Chair, and Parliamentarian.
So we have obviously done a lot of reflection since last week, and I think I'm hopeful that the conversation will be productive. But essentially, what was more or less passed around was to accept all the nominations that any committee member would choose to make. You can speak to that when you make the nomination, have room for discussion around candidates, and then move to a roll call where people say who they choose to elect in that process. And if there isn't a prevailing vote, you can redo it. And so I think people have looked at some different procedural components. The procedural rules in its current state do not speak to the nomination and election process. So there are some Roberts Rules pieces, but I think one thing that I heard from every member that I talked to over the last week was that everyone wanted good process, and so I'm hopeful that through a discussion about those steps, good process could be considered.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. So I have a few things to consider for procedural rules, so I thought I would present them now. So I did write something down, my thoughts over the last week, and kind of arranged them appropriately. So I want to begin by expressing my apologies to my constituents for abruptly walking out of our last meeting as you were left without representation. During Monday night's meeting, I felt my voice was being silenced and overshadowed by the dominant opinions in the room. Despite my valuable thoughts and ideas, they went unheard, lost in the noise of stronger voices. Many have observed that the Chair's tendency to dominate discussions and dismiss differing opinions has silenced the voices of fellow members, undermining the collaborative spirit essential for effective governance. It is crucial for the integrity of our committee that all members feel empowered to share their perspectives, fostering an environment of respect and inclusivity that ultimately benefits our school committee. Please consider the following recommendations with an open mind and a willingness to engage. I propose that we appoint a presiding officer to oversee the election process. Let's schedule nominations for the Chair, Vice Chair, and others for January and July. If any issues arise, we can reassess at the halfway point. I suggest implementing term limits for the Chair position or establishing a procedural guideline that allows for the Chair's removal if necessary. Additionally, I recommend instituting a procedural rule that permits a ten-minute recess whenever a member feels the need for more information or further clarification on procedural rules. Finally, I believe it would be beneficial to have our procedural rules reviewed by legal counsel prior to their adoption.
Thank you. At some point over the last twelve At some point, the details of electing the Chair were removed from our procedural rules. I do not recall when we made that change, but apparently that happened. The procedure used last Monday is the same procedure that was used for electing Chair for the majority of the ten years that I have been on the committee. This committee used these same procedures in January of twenty-four to elect the Chair, and no one who is sitting at this table had an issue with it at that time. Regardless of these facts, we have chosen to provide an opportunity to correct the situation and allow folks who felt that they were denied a voice the opportunity to be heard. I feel it is very important to maintain some form of guidance for this process in our procedural rules. Absent any defined structure in our procedural rules, we would rely on the city charter and then Roberts Rules for guidance per policy. I have developed a proposed process based on a review of past procedural rules, archived school committee meeting videos, Roberts Rules, and the process that is used by the City Council for nominating and electing their council president. I've previously sent this to Jake, so he already has a copy of it. Nomination of the Board Chair, the floor is open. Oh, I also wanted to specify that there is a difference between a nomination process and a motion. There can only be one motion on the table at the time, and that is how we proceeded last week. There was one motion, and as we did a year ago, one motion was made for a different committee member. That motion failed, and so it went to a second motion. The order of the motion were presumably reversed this time, but other than that, it was the same process. So I'm recommending a nomination process rather than a motion. The nomination process, the floor would open for the committee members to nominate fellow members to the position of Chair. The nominated individual would accept the nomination for their name to stand for the position of Chair. When nominations have been completed, the nomination process is declared closed, and those individuals who have agreed to let their names stand are now candidates for Chair. An election by roll call, nominations would be closed, and each member votes by roll call for their choice. In a two-way race, the member with five or more votes will become Chair. With more than two nominations, the candidates with the fewest number of votes would be removed from consideration resulting in two candidates for the final vote requiring a majority vote to pass. In situations where the nomination process results in only one candidate, a regular show of hands would be sufficient. And then, per our other policy, after the completion of the election of Board Chair, a Vice Chair, Parliamentarian, and Legislative Liaison would be selected as needed. This combines past practice as well as some procedural rules that were proposed in twenty-twenty when we had a different makeup of this committee and we were looking at different options. And as I said before, the way that the city handles their election of council president. So that would be my recommendation.
Thank you. I also wrote down some thoughts since last Monday's meeting, so I'd like to read those as well. And I do want to offer up a couple friendly edits to, not even edits, but just suggestions to go along with what Member Heard has suggested and what Chair Parks has suggested. So I'd like to take a moment to address the events that unfolded during Monday's school committee meeting and the concerns many of us are feeling about the process that was followed, or rather, not followed. But first, I do want to apologize for getting so heated with regard to who was called on first during the nomination process. After watching the meeting back, it's clear Member Eames did raise her hand before mine. So I'm just gonna own that one and move on. As we all know, the role of Chair is to ensure that our meetings are run fairly and in accordance with our established rules, procedures, and the city charter. It's not just about making decisions, it's about how those decisions are made. Accountability, transparency, and respect for the process matter, especially when we're making decisions that affect our entire community. As far as I'm concerned, Monday's vote was invalid. The nomination process was not conducted fairly, and the members were not given an opportunity to fully participate in what should have been an open and democratic process. When one nomination was put forward, it should have been followed by the chance for other committee members to make their own nominations and have them considered. This was not the case, and that is a problem. This was not the case, and that is a problem. As a result, some members, including myself, felt that our voices were silenced. I walked out in anger because the process was not followed properly and because nobody on the prevailing side would take the time to reevaluate what had happened. We cannot afford to let rules be bypassed or ignored, especially when it comes to something as important as leadership of our committee. A fair process is the very least our committee needs to strive for. I want to be super clear. It's not about opposing the outcome of the vote itself. It's about ensuring that the process was conducted with fairness and integrity. That's why I'm appealing the chair's ruling of the previous vote. The procedures were not followed correctly, and I believe it's necessary for us to revisit this vote to ensure it reflects a proper process. We must hold ourselves and the chair accountable for upholding the procedural rules that guide our work. This is not just about a single vote. It's about setting a precedence for how we operate as a body, and what happened last week wasn't okay. The rules exist to ensure that all voices are heard, all perspectives are considered, and the will of the committee is carried out fairly. In light of this, I do believe the vote needs to happen again tonight. I'm not sure if appealing the chair's decision last week is enough, or if rescinded votes need to be announced, but as a committee, we need to reconsider what happened. We need to follow the correct procedures, ensuring that every committee member has the chance to nominate and be heard, just as the rules intend. And I think that if we can restore a fair process, the outcome will be respected by all, regardless of what that outcome is. Moving forward, I hope whoever holds the title of chairperson will dial into their conscience and allow common sense to prevail when concerns are raised about procedure. There's no shame in admitting when something isn't clear or when there is uncertainty. Calling for a 10-minute break to check procedural rules when in doubt will garner more respect from fellow members and the community rather than attempting to mislead or manipulate the situation for personal gain. We're all here to work together, and a willingness to engage in honest dialogue is what will build trust back again. With that, I think that the rules or the procedural edits that Member Heard put together, we did talk about it, and I'm all for all of those. The only edit I would say is, I do think that we should be holding the election for the vice chair seat as well. And so I'd like to see that possibly entered into procedural rules.
I'd like to again point out that we did not have rules in place last Monday for our procedural rules, because at some point that was removed from our procedural rules. So to make a statement that the rules were not followed or were disregarded or manipulated is disingenuous at best. Member Gallant?
I also have a statement I'd like to read. First, I would like to thank my fellow committee members who had the courage of their convictions to walk out last Monday as a peaceful protest to the unjust voting process that took place. Speaking for myself, I was exasperated at how the process occurred and the shutdown of our voices. This left me unable to concentrate with the remainder of our meeting. I felt my voice and the voices of other members were not important or heard. Walking out was not staged. I did not expect that this was something I would do. I certainly did not enjoy doing it. But there comes a time when protesting in a civil manner is necessary when an unreasonable action has occurred and needs to be corrected. People have asked me, what did it feel like after the voting process last Monday? I said it felt like I was eight years old and someone played a card trick on me that I did not understand. You know, sleight of hand, now you see it, now you don't. After the confusion, I felt angry, I felt the unfairness, when all we were asking was for clarification and reasonable discourse. I believe in second chances, I believe in giving grace and empathy. I also believe people, I also believe people when they show you who they are. Our chairperson revealed to us who she was at that meeting. Unable to right a wrong, unable to stand corrected, unable to consider other committee members' recollections of last year's voting process, unable to make concessions or compromise when clearly shown the correct method of voting procedures. As in a leadership position, the chairperson of the school committee should have known the correct procedures prior to last Monday night. Integrity, moral strength, transparency is what our community expects of us and what we should expect of each other. I believed what happened last Monday is this chairperson's modus operandi, her true mode of operation. This is her nature, and it does not sit well with me. I would also call on other committee members who would not rescind their vote in order to proceed in a Roberts Rule manner, to look within themselves as to the content of their character as well. If the other committee members were not 100% sure of the procedure, they should have allowed further discussion. It is not easy to go against a well-established individual. History has shown us all too well that when we do not question authority or believe leadership is infallible, or if we fear to stand up to people for what is right, we hit rock bottom as a society. We have a lot of work ahead of us, and I hope that we, as a committee, can come together and do what we were elected to do for our kids and our community. Thank you.
Member McLaughlin?
I didn't have anything written down, so if anybody has other written statements they wanted to make, that... Okay. I'm not being rude about it. Just honestly, if you had something else, I didn't want to get in anybody's way. I was actually just to say, yeah, I think a nomination process closer to what the city council does makes more sense. My sense is that I think we're probably all on the same page around that at this point. And maybe I'll come back to some of the specific points that were brought up around the details of that. But just, you know, based on some of the things that have been said so far, you know, I would just say generally, I'm hopeful that this group, we can all, you know, work well together respectfully just out of respect of the students that we're trying to serve and the institution, and, you know, the positions that we all hold, even if, we don't have to like each other, but, you know, we have to at least respect the work that we're doing, I suppose, and, you know, sometimes just even put aside what we think of others' intentions and so on. Anyways, that aside, though, I think for some of the reasons stated, it just does make more sense to go with the nomination process. And I guess I don't need to belabor that point since I think that's probably the direction we're moving. I would say some of the particular things that Member Heard brought up, I think a presiding officer is actually a pretty good idea, and I think that would likely defer to the superintendent. Obviously, the city council effectively has this with the mayor. I think that makes sense. A couple of things that you mentioned, such as that Member Heard mentioned, including, you know, a procedure for removing the chair, as well as time to look into, like, a rule question. I actually think Roberts Rules already provides for other of those things. I think we can do those things regardless of having them in our own rules. So that means you can call for an inquiry, and you can take as much time as the chair kind of allot for that. And then, if that's not enough, you can also call for a recess. And the chair, my understanding, we can double-check this, but I believe that you can replace the chair with a majority vote at any time. That's my, that's my understanding. So I also think review by legal counsel is probably a good idea, but my hope would be that maybe we don't wait. Because again, we could, we can also change the rules by majority if it's on the agenda ahead of time. So my suggestion would be that we do move forward with rules and another chair vote this evening. And then if we want to have those rules reviewed, we can do that afterwards. And if there's issues, then we can revote on them. Hopefully, not to the point of needing to redo the elections and all that, but just to kind of make sure that everything is square. I guess that's just kind of where I'm at on these particular rules. And I do think the, I think we need, we should have adopted them at the beginning of the last meeting. And I will also take responsibility for not seeing that and understanding that at the time. And so, you know, I think we just need to adopt them now, and hopefully we'll be content with the process going forward and, you know, have them in place for the next year. And then, next January, we'll vote on the next year's and so on. So that's all I have for right now.
Thank you. Member Harriman, Councilor Harriman?
Thank you. I just want to also express my support for a nomination style of electing the chair, similar to how the city council does it with the council president. I think that that just makes more sense in that you know every person who's going to be nominated ahead of time, and you can base your vote accordingly. Although I prefer that method, I didn't, I didn't speak up at the last meeting because I was under the impression that the method we were using was in our rules. It was the way we did it. The only reference that I had was last, well, I guess it was just before we were sworn in, when we used that same method to select our chair then. So I was under the impression that that was still what we had all agreed on as a group. I also hope that we can, you know, we can come to some consensus over what procedure we're going to use, and then go ahead with redoing that vote from last week. And then I hope that we can, we can all continue to work together well as a team and continue to address all the issues that we've been elected to do, to address. Thanks.
Any further comments, Member Eames?
So I too thought we were following procedure. It was only after the whole kerfuffle that it was pointed out, I guess by Karen, that it wasn't in the current procedural rules. So at the time, I thought we were following procedure, but now I understand, first of all, we weren't, because there wasn't one. Second, it wasn't the best procedure anyway. So I'm very willing to reconsider all of this. I do think we need a parliamentarian. I mean, I think that if we had had one in place... I know last year we decided, oh, we don't need one, but we really need one because we need those, that 10-minute recess or that moment of consultation with the rules should have happened and would have been better if we could have done it. And it would have been better if we knew who was the person who was going to do it. So I would really hope that we have a parliamentarian, but it won't be me because I'm not good at that. And let's see, other things... We all, number five on these procedural rules, assuming we don't change it, is that we can always address the procedural rules. There's, at any given meeting, we can do it. I don't know if it has to be on the agenda to do it, or whether we can just do it, but it's written in that, so it might have to be on the agenda.
Yes, it's a fair question. I mean, with process, you can suspend the rules, but the procedural rules are actually considered policy, so they actually have to have two reads.
Okay, yeah, fair enough. Yeah, good. So, so we, so I guess if we do change these now, there'll be another time to revisit. Okay. Yeah, so I'm not against any of the suggestions. I think they're all good. So, yeah. Vice chair elected, I think that probably makes sense, too, even though I think currently it's appointed in the rules. So that would be a change, I think.
That part, I believe, was taken out also. Whenever it was taken out, it's not in there anymore.
Was that intentionally taken out, or just?
I didn't appear in the next being taken out. I'm not sure. It wasn't in the 20, it's 2025, it wasn't in the 2023 version or the 2024 version. So I'm not sure at what point, but... So those are all the years I've been here, so it never was here when I was here, I guess. Okay. Any further discussion? Member Osman?
I'm open with revisiting the nomination from last week, and then we can have the nomination on the table and then have open discussion. And then we can go through the nomination process, and I would be okay with the vice chair as well. And we can do it, and we send our vote from last week.
Thank you. Member McLaughlin?
Yeah, actually, just a question since it came up. So we're thinking, okay, nomination, election of chair. Nomination and election of vice chair? You're just thinking, I'm just trying to clarify what the idea was there? Or just same as I think it is in the rules, at least to an extent, which is the chair makes the nomination, so the chair chooses, then the full committee votes. Yeah. But then, also, as it's currently in the, the last year's rules, parliamentarian and the legislative liaison are just appointed, there's no vote. So that would be, I just want to make, to be honest, because on the agenda, it does mention the election of the parliamentarian. So I just want to make sure of what we're all actually wanting for that. I think, just to say, I would be fine with, I mean, just for standard process, I think nominate, the chair nominating the vice chair, and then having a revote on it would make sense. I don't feel super strongly about that, I suppose, if we want to do nominations for that. But, and, you know, I think it does at least make sense, at the very least, that the chair just nominates the liaison and parliamentarian just because I think we're starting to get into kind of more detailed positions there, I suppose. So that's my current thought, but I want to make sure what everyone is thinking.
Historically, the parliamentarian and the legislative liaison have just sort of been a discussion, because that's not usually, no one's usually fighting for those roles. So it ends up just being sort of a discussion of who might be interested in doing that. And then if there's anybody interested, that's how we move forward historically. But that can change. Member Bowden?
Thank you. I also had a suggestion as far as the vote for vice chair. So on my time serving on this board, there's only ever been two nominees up on the table and voted on. And, you know, as I stated before, like, this shouldn't be political, but it is political. And there's a split in this board, and there's a split in this board every single year that there is a vote, and it's always a 5-4 vote that I've seen. And I'm wondering how everyone would feel about when you have two nominees on the table, one of them has voted as chair, and then the other nominee is vice chair. Just to sort of keep the peace and to keep both sides represented. I'm just looking at that, just throwing it out there to see what people feel about that.
Did you, did you want to say that on a mic or not?
It didn't go well when it was Adams and Jefferson.
I think it's better to have the chair nominate the vice chair and then have open discussion about it, and then we can all vote on the vice chair as a committee.
Thank you. Member Gallant?
So would there be nominations for the vice chair? I think that's what, yeah, was talking about. I mean, practically speaking, we all know that we're not going to, you know, like you said, it's political, we know that. It's, if you don't, if no one wants to admit that, then I'm sorry about that, but it's true. That's all I have to say.
At some point, we didn't have a vice chair at all. That was added, I think, like, five or six years ago. Prior to that, there was a period of time we didn't have a vice chair, because it was optional. And then I think that at one point, the chair just chose their vice chair, and that's just how it was. And then I think that there was, like, the chair nominated a vice chair, and then the committee voted on it. So I think that that process has definitely varied a lot, and I don't know that that's ever really been firmly defined in procedural rules at any point. It's, it's been all over the place. Oh, yes, that's what it was, actually. It was worded that if for any reason the chair was absent, it would go to a chair pro tem, and then the committee on that night would vote for who was going to be chair for that night. That was a process at one point also. It's, it's been all over the place. Member Heard?
Thank you. So in my suggestion about doing term limits, I think it's important for committee members, especially members who have, who serve multiple terms, that they have an opportunity to potentially be chair or vice chair and experience that and grow their knowledge and become a more well-rounded school committee member. And so that's where my thought process going there was. Because I think that, again, going back to is it political or is it not? Unfortunately, it tends to be. Because I think that, again, going back to is it political or is it not? Unfortunately, it tends to be. And, you know, you're potentially denying a committee member who may want, may want to further their school committee career or then maybe go to city council or may go farther than that. And they're constantly being denied that opportunity um to grow. Um, and I think if there's people who are willing to do that, we should, they should be given the opportunity to do that. So I do agree with Member Bowden about the chair just selecting the vice chair because it's always gonna be the same person, um, which kind of defeats the point. So I don't know how we get around that. I don't know if we just say like, no vice chair. I don't really know, but I, I just think that anybody that wants the opportunity should be given the opportunity if that's what they so wish.
I know the, the pro temp was what I saw for many, many years prior to me being superintendent. It avoided some level of that political piece of who's gonna get the other seat, but I think this committee can decide that.
Sorry, you have the current procedural rule language. And the only part that we are addressing in this agenda item right now is a procedure for nominating and electing chair, vice chair and parliamentarian. So that's what we're workshopping right now.
Correct. We, I didn't bring the whole procedural rules. I knew that some people had ideas that they were gonna share tonight so we could go back and do some edits. But I, I think you can default to a couple of things tonight. It sounds like there are multiple people willing to rescind their vote, which would trigger another round of action. If, if that's, if that's a step that members want to take, uh, we did leave that as a potential motion or potential next step in the agenda. In the hopes that just good process would prevail and it feels like that's what's about to happen. As far as procedural rules go, I do think we need to do some wordsmithing on that and get it back in front of you. And again, that's a two-read process. Um, and I am taking notes and Megan shared her ideas also. It, it feels like there could just be process around nominations being made and following those steps.
So you're suggesting we vote following a procedure that we haven't agreed upon yet?
Well, I, I think in the workshop, it'd be nice to have at least a kind of around-the-table consensus that, for at least chair, um, and then to, to work on the next steps.
Okay, so we need to figure out the details of that nomination process.
Yes.
Okay. Yes, Member McGoughlin?
Yeah, thanks. I was just gonna say, I, I would rather, if we can, just do them all right now. Chair, vice chair and parliamentarian. I was actually gonna maybe suggest what maybe the superintendent was alluding to, which I, I would be fine with just dropping the vice chair position, to be honest. Because I, I don't want that to be a point of contention. And the only duty is to run the meeting when the chair's not here. So we can, I think, you know, that's happened, I think, maybe once or twice and once, yeah. In the year that I've been here, I don't think it would have been difficult for us to just choose somebody at that time. So that would be my suggestion, um, make our work a little bit easier by just dropping one of the points to worry about here.
No objection. No objection at all.
And we'll get to public comment when the committee is done discussing. Thank you. We'll get to public comment when the committee is done discussing. There is language in past procedural rules around the, doing the pro temp process. So I think a lot of that is already written.
There, there's also um language in the policy BDB about the duties of a vice chair. So if we choose not to keep that role, we'll move forward with the, the um removal of that from the policy. Just so that you know, it is in policy, we would need to remove it.
All right, so where do we want to start building for the nomination process and all of that?
I, I know this is a workshop item and by kind of definition, we don't hear from the public. But I, I'm wondering if you would entertain the public to weigh in, given the, the uh challenges we've had over the last seven days.
Did anyone have anything else that they wanted to add before we go to public comment? Councilor Harriman?
I was just going to add, as far as the, the language about selecting a pro temp um presiding officer, the city council rules also have some language about that. In case the mayor and the council president are both absent, that's what the city council does. So that's just another potential source for language there.
Thank you. Did you want to say something or? No? Okay. Members of the public that would like to speak on this agenda item can approach.
Ronnie Parity, uh, Ward Six. And having been on the committee, school committee for 12 years of my life, we never had this problem. Uh, let me tell you what we did with pro temp. When the chair was sick, and I still remember this, that night, they picked me to be the chair. That we didn't have any vice chair, and I don't think we should have a vice chair personally because it's too political. And if the chair has anything to do with a vice chair, then it will be political. And I think everybody think, I agree what the four did uh in their disagreement. Maybe it wasn't right to walk out, but they had every right to do what they said. You guys were not following procedure. I have never seen this done in a school board meeting. We always got along. When we decided about a school chair, we knew before the first meeting of the year who the chair was gonna be. Okay? When I had a disagreement with the chair, I would go behind the back and talk about it. We didn't do it in public. We came out as a thing. And you guys and everything, I agree with the four. I agree with what her did and I agree with what she is saying tonight. Do not pick a vice. I think you should have a parliamentarian because you're not following Robert's rules and you need somebody with a parliamentarian here. And uh, there's too much division right now and you won't get the budget passed. And I'm telling you, you guys have really a problem when it comes up to budget this year. And you need to get together. But I agree with the four people that did walk out and I understand why they walked out. Maybe it wasn't the right way, but why didn't you do a 10-minute break to give people a rest? And I think you should put that in the rules, that when there's a disagreement or people are getting thing, take a 10-minute break and everything like that. But this is ridiculous, which, what's going, what's going on. But I have to agree. Uh, Megan, I, I heard, I like your policy. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on this?
Matthew Agar, Ward Four. While I think it's wonderful that you're now going to adopt possible policy, it would have been wonderful if you had put it in the packet tonight so that the public could see a policy so that we could know what you're voting on. You guys are all talking about this policy that's been submitted among you all. There's not a copy that's come this way. When the city council at the last meeting adopted a new set of policy, that policy was in the packet. So the public could say, hey, yeah, I like this idea. I like this idea. I don't like this part of it. This is why. We don't know what your policy is going to, what your policy's procedures are going to be because there is no share of it. I've heard Megan Hurd's plan. I've heard yours. I've heard some suggestions from other people. But there is nothing that was in the packet so we know what even you're considering voting on. That's horrible transparency, guys. That's almost like you're wanting to hide your policies, much like you don't put them on the website where they can be found easily. And like I said, I asked former members of the committee where to look for these policies and they couldn't tell me where they were because they couldn't find them. If you're going to do something like this, make your policy planned, put it out so that we all can see it and go, it's a great plan and I can support it. Or I can say, hey, this is a horrible idea. Let's not do it. I'm also agreeing with the fact you guys don't need a vice chair. A chair pro temp works because how often do you not have a chair sitting in the room? They gotta be ill, dying, et cetera. You don't need that. You do need a parliamentarian. Good luck to somebody because none of you are Kathy. But transparency, we don't know what you're voting on. We can't even comment on what the specifics is because there's no written form of it. It's a horrible idea to adopt something tonight that the public can't see. Thank you.
I'd like to speak on behalf of our staff that prepares our packets, that she does a lot of stuff. Um, and so I, I suppose Jake can have a conversation with her, but the amount of workload that she has in order to get these packets out is not light. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
There you go. Pete Agar, Ward Seven. Um, I had 15 years, almost 15 years on the State Board of Education. We did have a chair and a vice chair, but it's irrelevant because there was different duties. Um, I think what I heard you say is that you would, if you had a nomination, you'd then poll everybody verbally. Um, when we had more than two people, you may want to just say you may want to do it by ballot or verbally, depending upon what you have. But if you, if you do it verbally, then it becomes more political because this person voted for this person or didn't. So um, what we would do is um vote um by ballot if it was more than a person. So just a, for consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak on this agenda item? Thank you. Thank you. All right, so starting to build this policy. Where do we begin?
I, I mean, I think you, we, we need consensus on what these steps are um before you use them, obviously. And there's still another step to rescind anything if that's the will of the committee, which has yet, yet happened.
No, that's the next agenda item. So on this agenda item, it's just firming up the poli, the procedure for electing chair. It sounds like everybody is sort of in agreement to drop the vice chair. Is that sort of a common accepted? Yes? Yep, okay. So then we just need to determine parliamentarian and chair, the procedure for those two. Uh, Member Hurd?
Thank you. I think in Robert's rules, there is a procedure that they outline for how to nominate chair. So I don't know if we can take a few-minute pause or we can look.
There's several in here, depending on if there's a nominating committee, not a nominating committee. If it's small body or a large body, there's several different ones in Robert's rules. Right.
If, if we took five minutes, I could put what I think I'm hearing with what I've seen done before on electronic paper and put it up for people to see. Um, and we could modify that as you wish.
Yes.
I just want to understand the position that we, what, what we can actually do tonight because you just mentioned earlier that if procedural rules that we are gonna follow are a policy that requires two readings. What is the situation then?
That you nominating electing an officer doesn't have to be in procedural rules at all. So you could take act with consensus and.
Okay.
We've also waived the second reading on procedural rules most of the time.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
So does everyone want to take a few-minute break? Member Bowden?
Thanks. So I just want to piggyback off of um Phoenix for a second. So if we come up with um a new procedure, part, well, one of the bullet points that Member Hurd said was having this looked over by legal first. Should that happen before we nominate and vote?
That's, that's the decision of the committee. Any language I'm going to use is gonna come from Robert's rules and the suggestions I've heard that all are permissible in Robert's rules. You don't have to have this in procedural rules at all.
And I just, Councilor Harriman?
Thank you. Um, I feel like if we come up with, or if we adopt a procedure that has been laid out before, such as in Robert's rules, and it's something that we all agree on, that that doesn't need to be reviewed by legal before we use it. But I agree that we should, um, you know, once we, once we tweak our rules a little bit, that we should submit them to legal for review, just to make sure that everything's okay.
Okay. Does everybody want to take a break now? Okay, thank you. We'll take a brief recess.
So walking through this, again, this is, I think the gist of what I picked up on, but if the vote from January sixth is rescinded by the committee, you could open the floor for nominations from any member of the committee. And all, any nominee has the opportunity to accept or decline the nomination. Committee can discuss the candidates that accepted the nomination. Your roll call or ballot, roll call would be where you, we would just go around and you as a member would say who you're voting for, and we would tabulate that. You can do ballot too. I charged Bill with getting some paper just in case when he's got paper and Karen's good. In, in which case you would, depending on how many nominees there are, actually it doesn't depend. You pass it around and you write down who you chose. Those could all come back to me and I'll just count them. The good part of that is it, it, it lessens the pressure on publicly saying certain things to, to be swayed by politics or other things. So that will have to be a decision. If there's a prevailing vote, in tonight's case, it'd be five votes or more, the process is complete. If not, the lowest vote receiver is taken out of the next vote. And if there's not a prevailing vote, you repeat the process until there is a prevailing vote. And then I feel like I was hearing to use a pro temp model for meetings should the chair not be available, which is easy enough to facilitate. Thoughts?
Member Ames?
When I was on the region six Zoom this week as the liaison, which I don't know if I still will be soon, but right now I still am. They mentioned that the nominees speak to the committee. Not just that the committee can discuss the candidates, but the candidates can speak to the committee. And I don't know if that's worthy of a line. But maybe it seems like a good idea. Like if you want to say something, if you want to make a platform, then that would be your chance. So it's, it'll be an option, not a requirement, I guess.
I can adjust that as, as we need.
Member Boden?
Thank you. So, so to that point, when, when we did our last nomination process, it was before inauguration. So we sat in a workshop and did the straw poll vote. And there were nominees put on the floor and nominees were able to speak. That did happen in our last process. But on that note, is there a way for us to add into this that we will no longer, well, if the committee wishes, I don't think we should be doing this nomination process at inaugurations? Is there a way to remove that?
That's a Kathy thing. That's.
Yeah, but it feels, it feels wrong because we did that behind closed doors and made a decision behind closed doors that we were then going to go in front of everyone for like a show and then do the vote for show, but we had already decided on it beforehand. And it just feels wrong. It feels like we're hiding something. And I don't know how everyone feels about that, but I would like, I, I don't think that should happen at inauguration anymore.
That's what happens with the council president and stuff too. They kind of decide it unofficially behind the scenes and then it's scripted in.
And, and that's fine. If city council wants to keep that in and do it that way, they can. But I just think as a school committee, I don't think we should be doing that. Well, every, every two years, there are inaugurations.
Because some are two and some are three.
And then it's going to turn into a two-year rotation. It'll still be every two years.
Yes.
Sorry, Councilor Harriman?
I don't know that we're going to be doing the big inauguration ceremony, but because it's only going to be half of each body every, every year. Yeah, every year. No, it'll, it'll still be every year. And then I had a couple more, a couple of points for this. It might help to clarify the process if we put a line in there that says when nominations are closed. So we, we put the nominations out there, close nominations and then discuss. And then I don't know if it needs to go into the rules or if it's accepted by default as an agenda item, but the public should be able to give public comment on, in the same area as the committee can discuss the candidates.
I was just saying to Jake, the, our current policy states that the election will happen at the first meeting in, in January. So if the first meet, I would, I would be thinking about the policy in terms of when that meeting happens would be when we would do the election. So if that's not, that's not the inauguration, then it, then it wouldn't be according to the policy.
It's also in charter too. It's in charter.
I looked it up in charter and it specifically says the first meeting in January or a meeting soon thereafter. So it does not need to be the very first meeting in January. It can be soon thereafter. And I think that's important.
I, just to clarify, I wasn't saying that it had to be. What I was saying was it, it, it didn't need to be done at inauguration, that it would, could be done at a, a regular meeting. So I was agreeing with you.
Yeah. Okay. A couple of things. One, just, I guess I will say, just not that we're deciding this now, but it is kind of a funny tradition, I think, that we had with that big inauguration and all that. But because not everybody will be sworn at the same time, like inaugurations will be staggered, then we won't be having chair votes then anyway. So I think that'll be okay. My only thought on this was just, seems like the decision point is just roll call or ballot. I think the ballot idea is interesting, but just because I think we're all familiar with it, it's what the city council does. I think at least for now, I think we should just stick with roll call vote. It just is kind of, I don't know. I think everybody is used to it because this has been maybe a more public discussion around the chair. It just seems more appropriate to me in part, kind of in the spirit of, you know, making clear what we're doing and, and kind of not. I don't know. I, I don't hate the ballot idea, but it just, it strikes me as sticking with what, you know, the city council has done makes a little more sense to me, but that's my thought.
And one of, sorry, one of the other points made earlier about this never happened years and years ago, because it was decided ahead of time. My first few years on the school committee, that's sort of how it was done, like an unofficial conversation among everyone of like, who wants to be chair? Okay. And then they sort of would decide, and then the public vote would just be smooth as can be because they would already have decided who it was going to be. So one nomination would be made, or one motion would be made and it would be voted on and everything was good and it was unanimous and it looked wonderful to the public. But I think that that's, if we're going for transparency, that's the, going in the opposite direction because then those conversations are happening behind the scenes and not where other people can see. So as great as that appears for like public appearance sakes, it, it's not, it's not a transparent process. Member heard?
Thank you. So I actually respectfully, remember McLaughlin, think that the ballot would be a better option. I think sometimes there can be a little pressure from other members or stuff that's kind of chatted about behind the scenes. And so if we do ballot, then no one knows what the other is writing down and it's very easy and seamless. And no members have to feel pressured to vote one way or another, or another member is going to be upset if they vote one way or another. So I actually like the ballot idea because I think it just keeps everybody happy. There's no contention. There's no anger. There's no, you know, hard feelings. It's just, it is what it is.
Member Boden?
Yeah, I, I concur. Like I think the exact same thing. And I was going to say, I don't, I don't think a secret or a ballot would necessarily be less transparent. I just, I just think again, what member heard just said, it keeps pressure off of people. If you're feeling pressure to vote a certain way, if there's a conversation that's happened behind the scenes and you're feeling like you really should do this because this person's your friend or, or whatever the case may be. It just takes that pressure out of it. And so I would, I would be more apt to go for the ballot option.
Memory?
I think we should not have roll call vote or ballot. I think we should have one or the other. I'm not saying which.
No, we, we need to decide on one.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. That is exactly what I'm saying. We need to decide on one. So we don't have that decision point in the middle of a meeting. Like that's.
Oh, no, no, no. Yeah. It needs to be decided now and then put into writing. Yes. I see. Understand what you're saying. Okay. Uh, member, Councilor Harriman?
Thank you. I would just put my vote in for the roll call vote. I just feel like it's, it's more transparent and although with a ballot, you could, that could potentially remove some pressure. I think with a group this small, we're still mostly going to know who voted which way, even if it is a secret ballot. So yeah, I would, I would just keep it as roll call vote.
Memory?
I guess I would lead towards ballot. That it's just, it'll end up with a more honest answer, I think. Honest, you know, that's my.
Member McLaughlin?
Let's do ballot. I think we should keep. Let's do ballot. I think we should keep moving. That's my sense right now.
Member Osmond?
I agree, we should do the ballot as well, so we could get those precious of all for this.
Are you okay with that, Councilor Harriman? Are you comfortable with that?
It's as long as it's the majority of the, the group that wants that.
Just for the chair vote, to be clear, I'm not saying like
No, not every, no. You deleted the wrong thing. All right. Are there any other details that we need to firm up?
Any other questions from the committee about what's here?
Councilor Harriman?
I think it's, it's probably not something that may be able to be addressed by rules, but there are situations where maybe there's three and let's say the, yeah, I don't know. I think they would be very rare situations that, that could be, that could be hashed out. You know, with conversations, like say there were three nominees and each one got three votes, then how would you eliminate one for this? So, but I feel like that's going to be a pretty rare situation.
I think if there, if there's a tie, you'd have to have more discussion and figure out how to vote. If there's three, if there's three nominees and he's got three votes, we, we would have ourselves a conundrum. If, if we, if we run into a dead end process wise, but we follow a good process, we can always pause the process, see what plays out and return to it.
Sure. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this agenda item again?
Gregorin Ward Five. The first line that I think you guys should remove from this is the very top line, because these should be your rules going forward for the chair. Whether or not the vote tonight is rescinded, this puts a formal transparent rulebook in play. It doesn't mean just if tonight's rules are rescinded, but it should be ongoing until the next time you change the rules. I can accept the fact that you are going to a ballot, but I would rather see a transparent, like the city council does. Who supported who? Who voted for who? If you end up in a three, three, three split, take five minutes, do a little bit of campaigning, come back, revote. If someone hasn't changed the vote, then we're going to be in a long night. It'll be like a city council meeting where we go to, you know, midnight. Other than that, these rules are basically acceptable. Just that first line needs to be stricken because these are not just the rules that will be applying to this committee this year. But in theory, they'd be the rules that'd be operating under in a year from now when the new chair is selected. So it doesn't matter whether or not the vote is rescinded tonight or not. This is also your rules for going forward until you change them. It's a transparent policy with the exception of the secret ballot, but I'll respect you guys' wish on the secret ballot. I'm kind of like Councilman Harriman on that one. But other than that, these are really good. Go for it.
How's that? Okay. Ron Podfin, two ninety-one Pond Road. The, the one thing that really stands out here, I guess if you want to do this, you're going to do it. I'm not sure about the legality about ballots. You're a government entity that's performing a public function. And you're taking an official vote. From a public's perspective, I'm not really pleased at the idea that my representatives are going to take votes and, I don't know, I don't know what they did. I don't know what they, how they feel. And if you feeling pressure, you're in the wrong business. You shouldn't be here. Politics is nothing but pressure. So I think for the effort of transparency, again, you're serving the public. There's no reason for you to hide votes. What are we doing at budget time? If we got a, you know, controversial item on the budget, are we going to take a secret ballot? And to vote on the budget too, you know, I mean, there's really no reason for ballots. There, there should be a transparent, open vote. There's no reason why not. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Carl Shalina. I live in Ward Two. I also serve as the mayor of Lewiston. You know, there seem to be a lot of go along to get along about the ballot versus roll call vote. It needs to be a roll call vote. We, we can't be writing things, you know, in secret. And then having the superintendent count them up, like making decisions in public is, making hard decisions in public is what we're all here for. And yeah, I really believe a ballot vote is just, is just a, a step backwards for this committee. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this? Seeing none, we'll come back to the committee.
I believe both are permissible. I think my two cents, it's just Jake. I would do a vote and not a ballot. I think a ballot could be better for larger groups or in, in different scenarios. I think this is small enough that your vote can just be known. I also don't know how much people will buy the result if it's not known. I just, I just think saying your vote is, there's, there's no arguing. Did Jake count them right? Did, you know? I don't want to be like the host of Survivor, like what else is in the pot, man? I don't want to be that guy. So I, I, I would prefer a roll call vote if, if that means anything.
Just really quickly looking through this, there's like all kinds of rules. If you go to a ballot vote, there's rules around like retention of the ballots, recording people's votes, the option to reconsider, like there's all kinds of stuff under the ballot section. So I, I don't know if that's, I was hoping to just open it up and find a very simple answer, but there's a line and a half of things associated with going with a ballot vote. Member Ames?
I, I understand Jake and I would, I will rescind that part too. I, I, you're calling on me. I take it. Okay. No, I think it's a fair point. One I didn't consider is that you would be responsible for that and it could potentially be a, well, is he telling us the truth, you know? Which I think is silly. I think that's just silly because obviously you're going to tell the truth, but I, I think it's a fair point and if I'm, I'm happy, I'm more than happy to do a roll call vote. That's completely fine. I just thought maybe a ballot vote would take a little pressure off of other committee members, but that's fine.
Member Heard?
Thank you. Yes, I'm fine with doing a roll call vote. I, like member Bowden, I have never felt pressure on the board, but I know maybe some don't have the personality that I do and may feel pressure and I was just trying to alleviate that. But I am fine with either. It doesn't matter to me which way we go.
Member Ames?
But it still should be one. I mean, it
Member Galant?
I as well is fine with verbal.
Sounds like there's enough consensus around this with a vote to be roll call. Okay. So, so that said, we can include this process down the road. You could use it tonight. It doesn't have to be voted in to use this process. I think it's good process. I think you've discussed it. I think public has weighed in. And it had good dialogue, even if it didn't land where everybody exactly wanted it, it at least had good process, so.
So in theory, we could vote it in to our procedural rules tonight and waive the second reading if we chose to, correct?
I don't even know that you have to include this in procedural rules at all, but you
The reason we ended up where we are is because it wasn't in procedural rules.
There's lots of procedures that get used that fall back. This is all Robert's rules information. You, you, you could vote it as a something that's voted in. You could just use it. You don't have to
Our procedural rules need to be voted on regardless because they expired January first. So we're operating off of, so either way, we do need to vote on our procedural rules. Doesn't have to be tonight, but we need to do that one way or another.
That will be soon for sure.
Member Heard?
Thank you. I was just going to say, I don't feel comfortable voting on our procedural rules tonight, especially with the suggestions that many members have made. So I am fine just going off this and accepting this as a committee if that's whatever what it wants. And then at a later meeting, going over our procedural rules and voting on those and making any changes that we need to make.
All right. Any further discussion on this? Nope. All right. Agenda item number nine, to consider a motion to rescind the school committee chair vote from January sixth, twenty twenty-five. And that would lead off with you and Scott.
Right. So I will make a motion to rescind the, I don't know what I'm rescinding. Is it the whole thing? The motion to nominate you. I am rescinding that. I'm happily rescinding that and re, starting it over again.
And then Scott would also have to be in agreement.
Yes, I believe that anyone from the prevailing side can do that, but I'm happy to second that motion.
Hold on one second, please.
You're, so, sorry.
Go ahead.
I think you're, you are making a motion to reconsider.
No, the motion to reconsider has different qualifications. I went back and said this today, the motion to reconsider, there's certain things that won't fall under a motion to reconsider, such as somebody being elected into a role, membership of our office, or the person was present, all of that stuff. So it has to be the rescinded, not the reconsider. But all I was checking is one of them requires a two-thirds vote and one of them just requires a majority. So I'm just, I was just checking on, that's all I was checking on. If anyone knows that off the top of their head, please. Right.
Think you just want a successful motion to rescind, is all I'm seeing. The challenge of Robert's rules is it has all these caveats and layers. And so I, again, defaulting on good process, if you have a motion and a second to rescind the vote, if you put it to a vote and it carries, then I think you've used the best of process.
And Robert's rules in multiple places recommends having local bylaws, which would be our procedural rules as detailed as possible, so that we already have that covered ourselves and we don't have to rely on Robert's rules so much. So that's recommended multiple times in here. So that's another reason why I think we should spell out the things. When we do update our procedural rules, we should have things spelled out. So we don't end up in another situation where we don't have an option. Any further discussion on rescinding the vote? All in favor? It is unanimous. Agenda item number ten, to receive and potentially vote on the nomination and election of school committee chair and parliamentarian. I took out vice chair. So yes, we'll do the chair first.
So, yeah, I can, I'll put the process back up. I, I just want to note too, that it, it was mentioned that from a place of process that you didn't necessarily want to do all of that tonight. You want to look at procedural rules for the vice and the parliament chairman, but I'm just putting that on the table. That's, that would be the direction I would take so we can clarify language for the future.
But as vice chair, I don't want to be vice chair. So can we just do?
That's eliminated already. We already eliminated.
We did, yes.
Right. You go to a pro temp model. What I'm trying to clarify
It's the very bottom thing, pro temp.
Your, your discussion is where I think we're headed. I just want to clarify out loud on the mic that the agenda item calls for other pieces that you have already discussed as not being part of what you're about to do. So the agenda says one thing. And you've modified it by going with a pro temp model instead of a vice chair. Yeah.
As far as taking nominees goes, if someone says a name, are they just to say a name right now or like to the thing? Well, no, like, so let's say I want to nominate someone and I want to list some reasons why. Do I do that with my initial nomination or do I just say a name and I wait for discussion?
I would, I would say some things now, but you'd also be welcome to say things during discussion.
I believe so, yes.
So should you open the floor?
Yes, I did that. I said, or does anyone have nominations? Member Bowden?
Well, I have some written down then, so I'm happy to start us off. So at our previous meeting, I had intended to nominate member McLaughlin for the chair position. I won't go into the reasons for that because that's not what this is for. But he did express that he was not interested in the role. So in light of this, I would like to nominate Megan Heard for the position of chair. And it's true, Megan and I are friends, but that's not my reason for nomination. Over the past three years, Megan has been a strong advocate for her constituents and a respected voice within the committee and the community. She consistently demonstrates respect for all members, is willing to admit when she's wrong and seeks clarification when necessary. As a parent with two small children in our district, she has a personal investment in ensuring fairness and balance in our decisions. Megan is committed to the success of our district and the success of this body as a whole. And I believe a time for change, I believe it is time for change in leadership, one that will unite us and allow us to move forward with the important work we have ahead. So for these reasons, I wholeheartedly nominate Megan Heard as chair.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Member Ames?
I did not write anything and I would again nominate Megan Parks for chair. She has done a very good job in my opinion, keeping us on track, getting us through all the disciplinary hearings that we are faced with and I would commend her.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Any further discussion is, what's the next?
The next part would be to make sure that the, those nominated are accepting the nomination.
Yep.
Or to be a nominee.
Member Heard?
I am surprised, but I will accept your nomination.
I will also accept. And then nominations are closed, right? I have to say that officially. Nominations are closed. All right. Nominees that accepted the nomination have the option to share some thoughts on, to the committee. Do you have any thoughts to share?
So thank you, member Bowden, for the nomination. I am surprised. Chair was never something that I aspired for, but in light of the divide that I feel is on the committee currently, I am accepting your nominations in hopes that maybe we can close that divide and become more unified, especially with our budget fastly approaching. I have enjoyed, this is my third year on the committee, so I think myself, member Bowden and member Parks are the most senior members on the board. And member Ames. And I think that's all I have to say, other than thank you.
I also don't have anything prepared to say because I didn't realize this is the process we'd be ending up in. I think that some really important pieces of what we do that aren't always publicly visible are the discipline hearings. I think that those are very challenging. And there's a lot of factors that go into how the discipline hearings run. I think that some committee members over time have grown frustrated with some of the processes around, like when we have to have an interpreter, so it goes later and people get frustrated because they want to go home. And, and my perspective on that is that I get that it's frustrating, but that's part of what we're here for. And, and just as we would want to give everyone their their opportunity, we, we need to hear everyone in that regard. And I think that the idea of, of amending the divide on this committee, I think is a wonderful idea and I think that's something that and um, I think that the idea of, of um, amending the divide on this committee, I think is a wonderful idea. And I think that's something that should have been done a long time ago. Um, just within the last week, um, I, I have disengaged from, from Facebook a, a while ago. Um, but I think in the last week I've had at least two dozen people send me screenshots of things that have been said on the internet and on Facebook in the last week and social media um, that are very clearly an indication that uh, mending a divide is not the intention of some people on this committee. So um, for those reasons, I think that um, I, I would like to continue as chair, so I can continue to work on, on this from a um, more organized perspective. I don't know what else to say. What's the next step? Say that again? Yes. Is that what's next? Is that where we're at? Okay. Um, we're going to open up for members of the public if anyone would like to speak on this nomination process. Public comment and then the committee, it's written public comment first versus committee, but I don't know that it matters.
Committee can't discuss. We don't have to, but we can.
Oh, it says twice. It says the committee can discuss candidates, the public can, and then the committee can.
Right. It always goes.
Okay. So is, are any other members of the committee wanting to comment now? Before we go to public comment? Okay. And then we will go to public comment. So we are now at public comment. Any members of the public would like to speak on this? Seeing none, we will come back to the committee. Any further discussion by anyone? Do we just roll call then? Okay.
Yeah, I'll speak. I mean, just since I'm going to be taking a vote, I feel like it's proper to at least say a little something. And I, I plan to vote the same way as I did last week. I, I wish that this process had gone better. I think we all feel that at this point. Um, at the end of the day, I mean, my interest is just, I want somebody who uh, can run the meetings, which is kind of the fundamental job of the chair. And uh, I, my feeling is that, you know, ninety plus percent of the time that's, it's, it's gone pretty well. We really haven't had until last week, which, you know, that, that didn't go properly, of course, and we've addressed that at this point, I think, but it's just been um, I guess I would say, I, as the, one of the newer people on the committee, I was surprised how few kind of you know, blowups or disagreements outside and around the process we've had, surprisingly. We've certainly excuse me, had disagreements about, you know, votes and outcomes and policies and issues, but in terms of managing that discussion, I feel like it's, it's gone pretty well. Um, it's not perfect every time. I, I think that's just kind of the nature of it, but that's why um, at this, at this moment, I'm, I'm going to be voting the same way. And that's, you know, with full respect for member Heard and all the members of the committee, um, regardless of, of, you know, their opinions and um, but that's, that's my feeling.
Any further, sorry, any further discussion? Uh, one thing that we didn't decide is how we start roll call vote. Do we just go around the table in this order? Do we start with one, two, three? I don't. Because that rotates for city council. So that's a different piece of it too, that we haven't discussed.
But I think, um, when we've done in the past, we've just gone in the order of introductions.
Okay.
Except for once, many years ago, there was a rotation, so.
Okay. We will start roll call votes with Councilor Harriman.
Megan Parks.
Word six, it's word seven?
Megan Heard.
Word six?
Do I say me or myself or my whole name?
However, you want to identify yourself.
Member Heard.
Word five?
Megan Parks.
Word four? Don't know why I'm coming back so hard. Word three?
Um, Megan Parks.
Word two?
Megan Heard.
Word one?
Member Parks.
I also vote for myself.
The vote to uh, elect Megan Parks passes five to four.
Thank you. Um, agenda item number ten, uh, eleven is future agenda item. Oh, sorry.
Did we decide we were going to discuss the parliamentarian tonight or?
I think they were saying we'll do that when we go over procedural rules. Is that what we're?
Yeah. Okay. Sorry. Thank you.
Yes. Member Eames.
I don't understand why we would postpone that.
I'm not sure, but that just seemed like the common consensus that people wanted to postpone that.
Because it's, having it is not controversial.
Is there anyone that is interested?
That's what I wanted to ask. Is anyone interested in being the parliament?
Yes.
Well, I would say two things. I would actually be interested in that role. By second, second, I would say, um, the, I actually might suggest that we do wait and address that in the procedural rules because because we don't have a rule for that currently that defaults to Robert's rules, which doesn't actually have a prescribed process for that, which would just default to the chair nominating. So I just think it would actually be better to just wait. I, I don't.
I just wanted to know if there was one that's.
As long as we just do it next time, that, but I will also express my interest. So thank you.
And everyone is aware that at any point they can call like a point of order or um, other language and like we can halt things and check. I have this in my bag at every meeting. So um, until we do that, we, there's always options. Yes.
Sorry. Is there an online version of that? Because um, the way the internet has been invented, you can get into links and links and links rather than having to thumb through. And I didn't know if, that must exist.
I honestly don't know.
So we might have to pay for that. I, it might be a budget item, right?
That's all over the internet and full of interpretations and, and.
But the kind, the kind with the embedded links, so you can follow the track.
Yeah, I don't know.
At the time I bought it, which was in twenty twenty, it um, this was the only way I could find it, but that has probably changed.
We're sure it exists. And I also, um, you know, I think lessons learned for everybody, but one of the things I heard from two thirds of you in conversation over the last week is uh, a bit of hope that I would be more vocal in those kinds of moments. And I think uh, in the future I will be, but I do so cautiously as I am your employee. So it's hard to tell the boss to stop.
Thank you. We appreciate you. Uh, are we back to future agenda items now? Member Bowden?
Uh, thank you. So um, I gue- I guess I need, I need to bring this up, um, because I, I think I have heard from more people about um, the video that has gone viral from um, our former teacher um, who addressed us than I heard about this whole chair fight. Um, so I want to bring this up because um, I actually believe that he had some really, really valid points um, in that video. And um, so I, I don't exactly know what the future agenda, agenda item is, but you know, when we talk about um, behavior policies in the high school and uh, what we allow. I mean, I feel like that's something we, we need to take a look at. Um, and also um, I know Edward Little kind of does a different level of diploma that you earn. Um, I don't know how Lewiston does that necessarily, or how we can incorporate that. Um, but, but one of the comments that that teacher said is, you know, you've got some kids who never go to class and never pass in an assignment, but then do credit recovery and then they're able to graduate the same as someone who went to class every single day and did every single assignment. Um, and so that was hard for me to hear as a school committee member because I, I know that's the truth. I know that happens. And you know, we obviously have our pathway subcommittee and we're talking about different pathways to graduation, but I, I think there might, it might be appropriate to have a different tier of diploma um, for situations um, like this. So um, I guess that's my future agenda item is, is to kind of take a look at um, what are we doing? What are we doing at Lewiston High School? And how, how can we help? Graduation requires like, how can we help? How can we?
Can, can I ask a clarifying question for future gen item? I very much not like to take things from social media and make them topics of discussion, but I do think there are things out there that we should talk about. I'm just wondering if.
I am not.
Are we talking about like tiered diplomas? Or what does that look like? Because it is differentiated with quality points and people's GPA and all those things.
I would like to see that. And, and, and just be, and I'm not, I'm not taking off of social media. I mean, he emailed us that video um, a week before I saw it online at all.
There's a number of contradictions.
Yes.
From lots of angles. I've had people reach out to me for very different perspectives.
Yes.
Um, and I, I just want to make sure that we're mindful that anyone can grab a video and drop a line. I just.
Absolut- absolutely. I, I agree with you there.
I've got some fundamental disagreements with things that were shared in there, especially as principal during part of that timeframe. Um, but I'm not going to go on video and contradict someone just to do it. Um, I do think there's valid points made that are worth looking into. I just, the future agenda item you said was the former teacher video. So are we looking at the former teacher video?
No, I'm sorry.
Items in it?
I'm just maybe not wording it correctly. So I just felt like there were things that he brought to our attention that, that we need to discuss and that we need to look at. Um.
So graduation requirements, the tiered degrees, what those look like.
Yes.
That kind of stuff.
Cell phones.
Cell phones? Is that part of it?
He, well, he brought up cell phones in that video. I, I personally, I don't want to talk about cell phones at Lewiston High School. I mean, that's just me personally. If someone else wants to bring that up as a agenda item, they can. Um, but I.
To the graduation, whether students are meeting requirements or not, and are still getting a diploma. That's what line you're going with?
Yes. And, and behavior and how we're um, what we're allowing and what we're not allowing as far as like how students are speaking to teachers and um, how do we combat that? So those are my future agenda items.
Member Heard?
Thank you. Um, so my future agenda item actually piggyback, piggybacks off that a smidge. I was actually going to say this at our last meeting, but I didn't get the opportunity. Um, but we have talked about this in our wellness um, committee before, and I wanted, I know there is a policy on it, but I wanted to maybe pull that policy, look at it, and then maybe add some other things about treats and rewards and stuff that we're giving to students. Um, my students are in elementary school, so not the high school. Um, but there is a big perception that students who misbehave or maybe are not following the rules get to leave the classroom, they get to go somewhere and they come back with a lolly, or they come back with a treat, or they come back with a food item, or they come back with a reward. And so um, I just want to make sure that we are being mindful of those types of things, especially when it comes to food. Like, we shouldn't be giving any food to any children in our district unless it's coming from the cafeteria and, or a special party of some sort. Um, you know, and I also want to make sure that our students that are doing everything that they're supposed to be doing every single day, all day long, don't also feel like they have to misbehave in order to get a reward or a treat or a special thing. Um, because we should be rewarding our students who are following the rules and doing everything that they should be doing every day long. Um, so I don't know if there's a policy on that, um, but I would love to look at it or maybe put a policy in place or something that we can do, um, because I think we need to be rewarding rewarding those students who are doing what we are asking them to do every single day that they come into our buildings.
Oops, sorry. Member Osman?
Yes, um, I also like to bring up um, a future agenda item um, that we talked about last week, um, adding um, uh, multicultural subcommittee. Um, um, and so we can have different perspectives from different groups of people, um, based on the communities that we serve.
Thank you. Any other future, remember Galant and then member Eames?
Um, yes, um, and I had brought this up before. This is not new. Um, is the phones, um, phone usage in school. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. More and more districts are putting um measures in place um, for not having phones. And there is both anecdotal and research and studies that show the profit, the benefits of having that. So I would like to bring that up at some point. I would also like to see um, a couple of weeks ago or whenever, uh, there was some discussion about a safety committee, and I don't know where that's at. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Eames?
Um, I just wanted to um, ask about committee assignments and how those have been divvied up and if our new member, I don't think you've been assigned any committees, so we need to work this out.
If we do some kind of like a retreat thing, then we can do the procedural rules, the committee assignments. If people want to switch committees they're on, like, that's kind of how we usually do it. So I don't know. We can start planning a retreat and that will help. Um, that'll help with other things too. Um, ju- just so you know, like the future agenda items, he keeps a running list. And so, and then he gets them on as quickly as they can. I know that you wouldn't know that already because you're brand new, but um, that's how, he keeps the list and then we go through it. And I think that like bringing that list and sort of prioritizing stuff at a retreat might be a good idea also. Member McLaughlin?
So I don't have a new agenda item, but I was going to bring up that my understanding of the calendar is we only have two business meetings between now and when the budget cycle will start. Is that right?
We have February. We typically have a retreat sometime between now and mid February, and um, that's not on the books yet, so we can talk about a date for that. And then we have the joint meeting with the city council. Um, we have a meeting early February. And then um, we get into vacation. I think we meet after. So yeah, there's two in February and they're spread out by the vacation.
The reason why I bring that up is if I know, okay, we need to get a retreat, but do we need a third meeting or something? What I'm worried about is we have a long backlog of agenda items for a variety of reasons. And my memory of budget season is that those meetings take up everything. And you know, there's the, there's the Main Street building to talk about. There's what's been brought up tonight, you know, cell phones, behavioral things, uh, Montello, which you've brought up a plan uh, before. Um, there are a couple of other things that have already come up. So I'm just just putting that out there just for myself. I would rather have you know, a third uh, meeting or something between now and then, rather than either not addressing the issues or extra long meetings in March. That's just why I'm bringing it up now. Um, I don't know if any of the other committee members agree with me, but that's, I'm a little just worried about it because, uh, you know, for a variety of different reasons, we've kind of had to postpone some agenda items.
Budget meetings are exhausting, to put it nicely. And so doing as little business as possible during the budget meetings, I think, is ideal. I don't know if everyone else agrees with me, but coming in, doing the budget stuff and getting out, if, and, and if there's time or things that are required, then obviously we would do that. But doing as little extra as possible through budget season, I think, would be nice.
Yes, sure. I just know all of these items require us to research them and have back information. Some of them are policies, so they go through different channels. Um, and we've been meeting twice a week on, for the most part, for disciplinary things. So hopefully we've resolved many of those and can get some of our time back. But I, are people wanting to have another meeting?
How can I propose something?
Yeah, I'm, I'm with.
We have.
So we have lots of things we want to cover, but I also know like we talked about a tiered diploma. That's not just to show up and chat about it. Like, that's a, that's a big, deep conversation with we need to get facts before you, we need to look at other schools, we need to, so. And by way, that's often like me, Karen, uh, so.
Can we discuss dates for the retreat? And if that's soon enough, then at the treat, retreat, we can discuss the agenda list and prioritize it that way and determine like what we can address during budget season, what will wait, that kind of, then we can sort of weigh it all out. Does that sound good?
Yeah, we had one tentatively booked on the fifth of February.
What day of the week is that?
It's a Wednesday.
Okay. For the retreat? Okay. Sounds like Wednesdays don't work for some.
I'm just, I'm going to say publicly, I don't love Wednesdays and it's, it's because I like to go watch high school sports and I feel like it's always on Monday and Wednesdays, and then I'm always here on Mondays and Wednesdays. And it's really frustrating. So um, I would vote for a different day of the week if anyone else would be okay with that.
So we used to do them on Friday night and Saturday all day. That's how we used to do retreats. So.
I mean, I don't want to come here on a Saturday, but I wouldn't mind a Friday. That wouldn't bother me.
Do you want to kind of poke around and then send out some options to us?
Oh, I mean, we could look at Friday the seventh.
Evening.
I mean, that's the things. It's, well, we, when it's a retreat, we go about it differently. The rules are a bit different. So um, I, I mean, I'm open to a Friday night, but I'm just like, it's, it's Friday night, like I my hundred hours are behind me and I'm not sure how much gusto I bring to it.
How about Jake's calendar and send some things out to us and we decide what works? So that way, does that, is that?
That's fine.
That's funny.
Member Galant, it sounded like that didn't work for her either.
And I could miss a few, but I'd rather not.
Monday, Monday, February tenth, there's no scheduled meeting in my calendar.
You, Member Glant, when we start budget season, that's Mondays and Wednesdays, you. Okay, alright, just. March.
No, early March.
Fifth, March fifth.
Third calendar is three meetings between now and budget. Less exchange.
The twenty eighth is our joint with city council. February second is our business meeting. And then the one in the end of February before budget season, those three, yes. Oh, was it third? I thought it was the second, okay. So the third, okay, February third. Yes. That's a Tuesday. Okay, you want to send some things out to us and we'll do it through email? Does that work?
Yeah, I could float some dates.
Okay. Any further agenda items?
So that.
That was originally, now it's the twenty eighth.
That's the twenty eighth one.
Um, agenda item number twelve is enter into executive session to discuss a personnel matter in accordance with one MRSA four oh five six A. Is there?
Second.
All in favor? School committee is in executive session at eight fifty two PM.